Good evening. It's Monday, December 16th, 2019. We're in the Governor's Room of the Community Center and this is the regular meeting of the St. Peter Board of Education. I'd like to call the meeting to order and to do so, we would consider and adopt the agenda before us.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second to adopt the agenda. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries and the agenda is adopted. If we have any audience member who wishes to speak to a particular agenda item, when we get to that, as we go through the evening, there's a card in the back, you can fill out a question and get it to Ms. Sarah. We would allot you time and opportunity to speak when we get there. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have, at our December Board meeting, we always have quite a, it's a pretty robust agenda and a number of the things have to be done in the month of December related to fiscal responsibility and so we'll be dealing with those as we go through our action items tonight. But to start out with, prior to the Board getting into those agenda items, we have our state required truth in taxation presentation. Mr. Regner and Dr. Olson.
Well, thank you. As Mark said, every December, we're required to have our truth in taxation meeting to talk about the levy and the tax impact that it has on the district for the next coming year. I think there should be a handout in your packet. I know we talked, if you remember back in September, we approved the initial levy or whatever they call it, the beginning levy, and then this is where later on tonight, we will finalize up the levy, but that goes along with the truth in taxation items here. As you can see, there's like a six-page handout. The first page is just kind of an overall level to talk about the amount of the levy. It changed approximately $7,900 from when we talked last September. The state recalculated one of our long-term facilities management items and the levy increased because of that. There's nothing else. We really did, it just increased because of that. You remember in September, we always usually, in 99.9% of the school districts certify the maximum at that time and after that, you can look at the different levies component. But the levy did change by $7,900 and right now, it's resulting in a levy of $6,640,501, which is up approximately $13,000 from last year's levy, or about a .2%. Maybe getting into, and you know, questions at the end here, I know we went over the set length a couple times, but basically, that's what we're looking at certifying later on tonight, that amount of the levy. Kind of on page four, we've got a graph of the levy over the past nine or 10 years and showing the different dollar amounts and the major changes. As you can see, this year, the $13,000 was a relatively small change from the year before. The following page then is kind of an, our levy is made up of, you know, 25, 30 different components, a lot of different categories that the state has for education, whether it's the, you know, the bond referendum or the different types of transition levies and safe school levies and those items. And on that, on the fifth page, we tried to itemize every one and their amounts and how it compares to the last three or four years. You can see in column G there, that's the final dollars for this year at the $6.6 million. And then the last page is basically, back in June, we passed the adopted budget and were required to, you know, re, kind of retalk about that or present that again for the coming year 2020. So that's what we had passed back at that point. But like I said, the main focus on that is the levy is looking at being $6.6 million this year, up just $13,000 from last year, and $9,000 changed from what we went over in September. So really, you know, we talk about, usually there are some type of small changes. The state, you know, they have 300 and some districts they're dealing with and, you know, 30, 40, 50 different levies for each one of them, so there's always some minor changes and tweaks as you go on. And like I said, this year was just the $7,900 one since we, since we talked last September. Kind of went over it a little quickly there, but I don't know if there's questions from anybody on the levy?
I just point out that the capital projects levy is one levy that is going off of the books, but the state gave us another option for dealing with our long-term facilities maintenance through that long-term facilities maintenance revenue. One of the good pieces behind that is it's highly equalized, so the state pays a fair share of that levy. You have to levy it and then the state equalizes it. So even though that capital projects levy is going off the books, we're still in good shape in terms of the revenue that you have available for your long-term capital projects. Those are things like roofs and parking lots and tennis courts and tracks and tuck pointing and all of those kinds of things.
Yeah. And our percentage is typically right around 50%, so you know, if we levy a dollar, we get an extra dollar from the state, so it's a good, good deal for the taxpayers.
Uh.
Vicky couldn't be here tonight, she's sick. She asked me to give a couple of reports for her, if it's proper. The Finance Committee did go through line by line through the budget, the property tax issues and as Tim noted, this is a $13,161 increase. Note that that's two tenths of a percent is what we'll be going back to the property taxpayers with, probably the smallest increase that I can remember at least. By the way, I will get that a little bit later on on action item.
Anyone else?
Thank you, sir. We'll see you later.
Yep.
Next, we have our consent agenda. As per our habit, we'll read through the consent agenda. If there's anything in particular we need to do with individually, we will, otherwise what's to approve would be in order. Tonight, we are approving the regular Board meeting minutes of November 18, 2019. We are approving a study session meeting minutes of December 2nd, 2019. We are also approving the special Board meeting minutes of December 6th, 2019. We are approving bills of $1,848,213.42 and wire transfers of $3,238,707.40 for November.
Mr. Chair, I was in last Friday and all the bills are in order.
Thank you, Treasurer Carlson. We have a few personnel items. We're accepting the resignation of a special education paraprofessional at North Elementary November 29, 2019. We're accepting the resignation of a special ed paraprofessional at North Elementary November 29, 2019. We are accepting the resignation of a media center supervisor at St. Peter Middle School effective November 29, 2019. We are approving the hiring of a special education paraprofessional at North Elementary. This is a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a health assistant paraprofessional at North Elementary. This is also a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a special education paraprofessional at the St. Peter Middle School. This is a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a long-term special education substitute at St. Peter High School to cover a maternity leave from December 2nd, 2019 to February 18, 20, 2020. We are approving a maternity leave for a teacher at South Elementary from January 22nd, 2020 and April 2nd, 2020. I can hardly wait for 2020 to get here, I'm telling you, 2019's been not so good, but it's hard to say. We are approving, okay, so we have one, two, there's three maternity things tonight. This should be the third one. Approving the maternity leave for a student support liaison from January 6, 2020 until February 18, 2020. We are approving of an adjustment termination date for a special education paraprofessional at St. Peter Middle School effective November 22nd, 2019. And we are approving the winter co-curricular advisor directors, as you see the attachment to this form. And that is the consent agenda for today. If there's nothing we need to take out, then a motion to approve would be in order.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just have a question on letter K, if, when we get to it. It's just something that I forgot, wasn't sure how it worked, so I'd like to talk about that. Can we pull that off the consent and just, just revisit about it? Or we can talk about it? I mean, how do you want to handle that? It doesn't matter, I just have a question.
Ask away.
All right. I noticed both the head boys hockey coach and head girls hockey coach are on there and the girls have an assistant, I'm assuming the guys have an assistant. Is that, is that being approved over in the sewer or how does that work with that cooperative?
I believe it's approved in the sewer.
It is, it's approved by the sewer board, so we approve, St. Peter schools are responsible for the hiring of girls and the sewer takes care of it.
And then, so then why is the boys hockey coach listed on there?
I think because he's an employee, a teacher of ours.
Oh, a teacher, okay. Thank you. That's all I needed.
Yep. Okay. So a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any further questions or comments? Seeing not all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries, consent agenda is approved. Which brings us to our Student Spotlight tonight. Mr. Graff.
Good evening.
Tonight, I have seventh grader at St. Peter Middle School, Vaughn Onesie. So Vaughn, can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Um, as you said, I'm a seventh grader at St. Peter High, I mean, St. Aaron Middle School and um, I have, I guess, I, about the school, I like the longer periods because then you have more time to learn about things in the same class and a few of my favorite subjects would be gym and health currently, those are the two currently that I like. And then also, a few of the extracurricular activities I'm in would be, I have, I do piano, choir, swimming, tap dancing, and then some confirmation for church and then, yeah, I think that's about it. And, oh, and I'm hoping to do tennis in the spring for school.
I'm a tennis coach, sorry. I got overly excited.
Vaughn, Vaughn was actually a part of the High School Musical, which just occurred. Can you tell us, Vaughn, how did you get involved in that?
Well, yes. At practice one day, my brothers and everyone else at practice there was asked if they had any younger siblings who would be willing, who were in like middle school or something, who would be willing to do the roller chip. And they volunteered me and then came home and asked me and I said, sure, so then I was, I guess, accepted by the directors and then I went to the next practice and started doing stuff like practicing and stuff and then I just got involved. The directors were very nice, they got a little stressed out at times when it was like very near to the playtime and then everyone there was nice, the older students helped a lot and then it was just really fun and it was a good experience.
Is theater or fine art something that you would hope to do again in the future?
Um, yeah, I guess so. I mean, before that, I hadn't really thought about going into it, but I mean, I didn't really like the spotlight, but then I realized it wasn't too bad and so I guess it would be pretty fun to do it again.
Cool. And then just one more question. So how many nights a week did you have practice?
Um, closer to the play, for two weeks, we had it every night at 6 o'clock and then, actually, I think most of the, most of the days actually was every night at 6 o'clock and then some, some weeks, it was just certain days like Monday, Wednesday and Friday or Tuesday, Thursday and then, yeah.
So how did you balance school and all of that extracurricular stuff?
Well, it was pretty hard, so I didn't, I think one of the main parts was I didn't really get too much homework during that period, which I think I was lucky in that way because there weren't too many classes where I had homework and unlike the ones, unless it was like one like math where you get homework sometimes every day, but, and then, yeah, I think I was just pretty lucky with the homework part.
Awesome. And then I know I said it was my final question, but this really is my final question. Can you introduce for us who you brought with, with you tonight?
These are my parents, him working the chain partsing. My dad's a psychiatrist and my mom's a doctor. My mom works at the state, I think, of, of, near, about a high school somewhere, I don't know. And then, yeah, dad just works like around for the county, that's another county.
Any questions?
Well, congratulations. It was, it was really fun to see you in that play.
Thank you.
It was very well done.
Yeah, you crushed it, it was awesome. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
And our second half of the Student Spotlight.
Um, right now, are, we're currently doing a food drive?
Ms. Lizzie, would you remind everybody who you are?
Oh, yeah, um, my name is Isabel or Izzy, I was everyone knows my name. Um, I'm a senior at the high school. I was in soccer in the fall and then I'm also in project for teens and then NHS, as I serve as like the senior representative for our leadership team. And I'm also in track and then I was in cross country in the past. So this, for like the holidays, we're doing a food drive for like our community, cause like it's in the holidays and we want to do something to give back. And then we also just, like as a council, we help like make, like make a Christmas present for our teachers, which was like really fun because it was like something that we could do that, like we weren't just like talking about something, we were like actually doing something together and working together. And then we also had a meeting with Dr. Olson during November and so we just talked a lot about how we can improve our school for the future and it was really like, I feel like it was like something that went a lot better than like, kind of expected it to go. And, well, I wasn't quite sure how, I was kind of nervous for it, but everybody like had a lot of really good ideas and we had like, we talked a lot about how we can make our school better and not just like our school as like the high school, but how we can like work with the middle schoolers to like make the middle school better and make the transition from the middle school to the high school easier for them. And also ways we can just like possibly give back to the community because like over the last couple of years, we have gotten like a really, really nice school from them, so like ways that we can give back to them and show like our appreciation for what they did for us.
You did very well, it was a fun, fun day.
So, yeah. Oh, and we also sold Love Your Melon hats. I don't know if you guys saw that on like social media, but as a student council, we sold Love Your Melon hats as like a front, as a fundraiser and it went really well and a lot of people bought them, so.
Questions? How many days before the break?
Four.
How many days left for school?
I don't, well, until I graduate five months, but.
Thank you. That gets us through the fun part of the evening, for most people. First action item tonight we have is the audit, accepting the audit from Abdul Iken Myers and we have our business manager and Mr. Tom Hollinger with us this evening.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm glad I'm the, the fun part of the evening. Usually, usually I don't get that, so I appreciate the enthusiasm. I'll get started here. I won't go through the whole audit report for you, but there's a PowerPoint presentation, looks like this, that we will, we'll go through that we'll just highlight. Just for your reference, we did a little over a week ago, sit down with the Finance Committee for an hour and talked through the audit report in detail and had some good conversation there. So I will do a little bit higher level reporting to you guys here, but if you do have any other que, any questions throughout, feel free to ask them as we go here. So kind of getting started, I'll go through the audit opinion, we'll talk about some of the financial results, both the general fund and the other governmental funds, and then we also, this year, have some key performance indicators where we downloaded information from the MDE website and kind of give some benchmarks of where other schools fall to kind of give you a reference on where you, where you're trending going forward. The overall audit results, we did have a clean opinion for this, this year, which basically means that we complied with GAAP in, in reporting. We did have a single audit again this year, which is if federal funds are over $750,000, we have to do additional tests on some of those programs based on a risk-based approach. So we did have that this year. And then we also go through Minnesota legal compliance, which really kind of goes through state statute on whether you comply with deposits and investments, debt requirements, dispersment requirements, conflict of interest and, and other miscellaneous provisions, so we kind of, kind of take a look at that too. So as part of the, the results here, we did have three findings this year, which were very consistent with previous years there. We did have a preparation of financial statements, that's something that's, that's common with school districts, it's just to note that we prepare the financial statements for the school district, we send it to management to review and go through and do that, but we just have to note that we prepare the financial statements. And this is something that's pretty common, you know, it's, it's sometimes tough for business managers to keep up with all the GASB's and all the reporting requirements to, specifically with the notes, to, to really provide a, a clean opinion going forward. So just for a cost benefit purpose for the school districts, they usually just have us draft the financial statements. We did note just limited segregation of duties, mainly with the food service fund activities, so we'll kind of continue to work with just kind of doing a few more checks and balances within the food service to, to have some compensating controls over that. And then we did have some year, year-end accounting adjustments this year, mainly with the state aid and taxes receivable. This is something that's pretty common because that, that formula does get fairly complicated to calculate those amounts. What we did, as a firm, what we did sit down is this year is kind of go through and try to create a spreadsheet that will pull the information from the numbers from MDE to, to calculate those receivables going forward. So we will work with, work with Tim on that to try to work through that to maybe eliminate that finding going forward with the, with the state and taxes receivable. But certainly something common with, with school districts. The next page, as you can kind of see, these were some of the similar, similar results that we had last year with, with that, so they were the same findings as the previous year. One, one recommendation that we did, do have this year is maybe to increase the capital asset threshold, so there's a capital asset policy of what, what do you, what dollar amount do you book as a, as a capital asset and depreciate? You know, currently it's at 2,500, we're kind of recommending maybe having that go up to 5,000. Once again, kind of the cost benefit of having it at the lower amount, if, you know, it's kind of cumbersome to, to record all those capital assets at the lower dollar amount and depreciate them over a period of time. So I think it might be worthwhile to take a look at that and pass the policy to have it at 5,000 and just have those assets be on there and anything below that's just expensed in the year that, that it occurs. So one thing you might want to take a look at. A couple of future accounting standards I'll go quickly through. We have the GASB 84, which is dealing with fiduciary activities. The main piece here is student activities that we'll have to take a look at and kind of rolling into the, to the general fund and having the Board control of, of that, of that. And it's mainly, the reporting is going to be the same internally, but it's just going to be how it's going to be reported going forward within the, within the general fund on there. And that's just where GASB just has some clarification on where the, how fiduciary fund should be recorded. Two years from now, we have lease accounting, that there's, there's a standard that will be coming out and that's basically having leases receivable and payable shown as an, as an asset or a long-term liability, depending upon what it is. Currently, the leases are just recorded on an annual basis, whatever revenue comes in. So I think, you know, kind of keeping, keeping in mind going forward, any leases that you do get into, that we need to kind of talk through those and how those should be reported. You know, specifically copiers, the kind of, the pain will be is breaking out the maintenance portion versus the actual copier portion. So there's some detail work that will have to be coming there, but that's a couple years out, but it's good to know now for future leases going, going forward. Getting into some of the financial information, the next page just has our average daily membership and general fund expenditures. As you kind of see, with the ADM increasing over the last few years, it did stay about the same as the previous year and currently you're at $12,628 per ADM for costs. So it did go up a little bit, mainly some capital items and, you know, as you kind of see the jump from 17 to 18, I think just some of the new school operational side and expenditures related to that had that jump, but it's, it's kind of leveled out and stayed consistent over this last, last year. The general fund balance on the next page for 2019, so this is just the unassigned portion as of 2019 is about four, almost 4.3 million. This, the thing to note is that the overall fund balance is 7.4 within the general fund, so there's 1.7 in assigned for future capital and then there's severance and VIBA and a few other assigned items there too. But really, it's kind of right in line with where your targeted unassigned fund balance is. So the other ones are kind of earmarked and that, that also is a little understated because there's some long-term facilities maintenance deficit that's currently in there too, and I think, was it about 700?
Just about eight.
Yeah, about eight. That is in there too, that's in, that's included in the unassigned portion of that. So really, right in line with where you need to be and you do have a few reserves for future capital items. The next page just shows the general fund budget to actual. The revenues exceeded budget by a little over 600,000 and the expenditures were under budget by about 200,000. There was a capital lease that was, was purchased this year, so if you were to take a look at that, initially the fund, you had budgeted about a $1.3 million deficit or reduction in fund balance and this year, it ended up at a little over the $200,000 reduction in fund balance for this year. Really, the revenues, there was just some additional state aid and local and county revenue that made up those, that 600,000. The next page is the general fund revenues per ADM and as, as I kind of noted, we, we put some benchmark guidelines in there, so we have all the schools within Region 9 and then also the statewide averages included in there and then last year and this year. So as I mentioned earlier, the state sources did go up a little bit this year. You know, federal stayed about the same and then the local sources also stayed the same, but really kind of right in line with what other districts out there within your region and statewide averages are for the general fund revenues, which mainly are driven by ADM anyway, so. General fund expenditures were up a little bit this year. It's been kind of a consistent trend. You know, I think a good chunk of that is just inflationary increases that we have and then also there was some additional sites and buildings and capital items for this last year that, that increased that a little bit for 2019, but overall, the mix of, of expenditures stayed relatively consistent. The next page, the general fund expenditures per ADM, so this is a trend line. To kind of explain this graph, this, this is one of those that we, we took all schools throughout the state and kind of did averages out there. So we have, you know, the gray shaded areas, the 25 to 50 percentile and then the 50 to 75 is the, is the lighter color shade. 25 to 50 percentile, and then the 50 to 75 is the lighter color shade. And then we have a trend line of the overall state average with the green line there. So, the overall general fund expenditures did increase, as I talked about earlier, over the last couple of years. But really, kind of got in line with what the statewide averages are for those general fund expenditures. General fund expenditures by object code. So this kind of breaks out between salaries, supplies, and benefits and purchase services. So, this, as you kind of see, has an inflationary increase there. No real object code increased over the last year. They've kind of stayed the same and kind of had that inflationary growth for the last three years. The next page, the food service fund budget to actual. There was a net change in the food service of 81,000 this year, which was just some expenditures were under budget for this last year. And I think, at the end of, well, at the end of the year, the fund balance was 326,000 in the food service. So, certainly a healthy balance within the food service. Taking a look at the trend of expenditures, for 2018, for the food service, there was a little bit of a spike in 2018 for salaries and capital. And I think that was, wasn't that a change in the allocation that you had on where the salaries get allocated between the general fund and the food service fund? And it dropped a little bit for 2019, but that was the increase for that 2018. Community service, comparing the budget, broke even this last year and currently has about 245,000 in fund balance. And the next page, kind of taking a look at that trend, it's trending up similar to what the statewide averages are. You know, running a little bit below what that average target is, but still within the norm of other school districts. The debt service fund. So for 2019, the balance of the debt service is about $54 million. As you kind of see, the maturity date of that bond goes out to 2041. There's just a general increase, kind of taking a look at the principal and interest, a general, you know, small increase in those principal and interest amounts over the next few years, which kind of range from about 3 million to 4 million annually that will be paid in principal and interest. The next page, the overall cash and investment balances. The cash balance did decrease by about $1 million. As you kind of see in the last couple years, for 2017, there was a significant amount of the bond proceeds for the building. That was in 2017. So as it gets, as those costs get paid and spent down, you kind of see that dark blue kind of go down. So in the last couple of years, there was dollars that you had that were spent on capital to finish up the project there, which leaves you a little bit over 13 million in cash as of 2019. The next page is the pension liability. So, we have both PRA and TRA. The total pension liability is about 14 million, which is down considerably from the previous year, mainly due to TRA. There was a change in the discount rate assumption. So, when you calculate the liability, there's several assumptions that they make to determine what that liability is. And they changed the discount rate, which actually dropped the TRA liability by about 24 million for you guys. So there was a significant drop there. But currently, you're at the 14 million. You know, the thing to note about this, this isn't 14 million that you have to come up with tomorrow, but it's kind of adjusted through contributions that are being made. You know, they sometimes change the rates on what the contribution rate is at TRA. And it's kind of to adjust for this liability to make sure that it's going to be funded in the future. Couple of last key performance indicators, overall property taxes. You know, the per ADM property taxes is below the average of both the Region 9 and the statewide. If you kind of see the next slide there, the average school district property taxes per home is a little bit above. This can fluctuate based on the mix of commercial versus residential within the city. So, this is just strictly the property taxes per home. So if there's less commercial, this could be up a little bit higher than what other areas are. And then also, as, just a little bit above the average of the per $100,000 home value after credits. So, there's just been minor increases over the last few years with that taxes. And as you had talked about, the truth in taxation, just a minor levy increase for this last year. The general fund balance as a percentage, it did drop a little bit, as we talked about, it's spending down some of the reserves there. But you're currently at 27%, which is really right in line with the Region 9 and statewide averages, around that 29 to 30% there. Elementary and secondary education, there was an increase for this year related to the elementary and secondary education expenditures per ADM, which is tied to additional capital. So capital is included in there. So that did drive this up a little bit here, too. And so, but really, kind of right in line with what the statewide averages are. And the special ed is running a little bit above the statewide averages. I think the thing to keep in mind here with the, is on total ADM. It's not necessarily just the special ed ADM. So, if there's a difference in mix between how much is special ed versus your total ADM, could push this up above that line, but right in line with what we have there. So, I'm certainly open up to questions. You know, I think overall, the audit went well. You know, I think we'll kind of keep working on a few things there. And I think there's a couple of the comments that I made on, with the taxes and state aid revenues, I think we'll make that step to kind of keep improving going forward.
Yeah, I just, when I see the year, you know, 2018 or 2019, is that based on the calendar year or the fiscal year for the school district?
Yeah.
Would be 18, 19?
Yeah, it'd be the fiscal year. So 18 would be the 17, 18, and then 19 would be 18, 19.
I just didn't know if you counted it different.
Anyone else?
I'm going to make a motion and just briefly speak to, I'm going to make a motion that move to accept fiscal year 2019 audit as presented.
Second.
Mr. Chair, we spent quite a bit more time on this in committee, of course, but there's some things that pointed out that I'd just like to reinforce a little bit. This is a clean opinion on the audit. That's something we have worked on to keep in place for some years now. The 60-day fund balance goal set by the board, we slightly increased that. I can't give you the exact dollar amount, but it's a slight increase. It's not a great deal amount of The capital asset threshold from 2,500 to 5,000, it's my understanding, is going to be assigned to one or more committees this coming year to look at, to see if the board will approve that. And we, in a minute, we're going to talk a little bit about policies. And one of them was talked about here, that separate the student activity accounts from the general fund. We address that also in our policies that will be adopted tonight. So, it was a good presentation. We had a lot of questions, some good discussion at committee level. I'd urge your support.
We have a motion in a second to accept the audit as presented. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. And the audit is accepted.
Okay.
Could you say one thing? Tom is probably new to a lot of you. If you remember prior years, it's always been Kyle Myers, a lot of years. Kyle's retiring this year at the end of the year. And I'd just like to publicly kind of thank him for all the years he's helped out the district. He was doing it for a number of years before I was here. And so, I don't know, but, so Kyle will be retiring and Tom will be our new partner going forward.
Do you get his license plate, Tom?
What was that?
Do you get his license?
I did not get his license.
Oh, come on.
No, no. But, no, and actually Kyle's my brother-in-law, so I'll stay, I'll stay in close touch with him. So he doesn't get away from me too easily. So, but no, no, we'll certainly miss him. Yeah. Well, thank you very much. If any questions do come up throughout the year, we'd be happy to answer them.
Very good.
Okay.
Thanks, Ken.
Yeah, thank you.
Next item we have tonight is to consider approval of certification of the school district levy for taxes payable in 2020. And this relates to the truth in taxation presentation we had earlier this evening. Mr. Regner, Dr. Olson?
Well, I'll just mention, I think I'm correct here, Tim. You held me out. When you consider approval of the certification of the school district levy, we should be talking about a specific number.
Correct.
And that's included in your information. But I think that, really, the district this year, the board, the committees and the board, the full board, worked very hard to, you know, provide a levy with that increase of 0.2%. That's pretty phenomenal when you think about that. So, and I know that's something going forward that you'll continue to look at it, to continue to have on your radar screen, to really watch out for not having those up and down taxes. Try to keep tax, the tax rate as consistent as possible. So, I would recommend approval of this. But Tim, what do you want to add?
Yeah, not too much more. You know, we talked about it. It's a $6,640,501, the levy. Just reiterate, about 13,000 from last year, and $7,900 change from what we talked about in September. Otherwise, everything's, you know, consistent with what we've been, you know, going over for about the last six months. So.
Requires a motion to approve?
I move the levy for 2020 is set at $6,640,501, which is a 0.2% increase.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Questions for Mr. Regner or anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries. Levy is set.
Thank you. Chair Coltrid, what is the license plate? Are you allowed to say right now or no?
Yeah, his license plate is big dog.
Nice.
And he drives a caddy.
That's awesome.
It is. It's funny. Considered, or, we have the secondary, and some revisions to the policy manual. Mr. Meeks?
Mr. Chair, members of board, this will be the final review, and we were recommended adoption of the policies as presented. Following policies were considered, 6.41, which is local and state requirements and policies, 6.42, credits earned other in regular class. Those both have to do with graduation requirements. 2.8, gifts to employees and school board members, just as a definition change of financial interest. 4.11, unpaid meal charges. It makes clear that you cannot deny a student participation in graduation for unpaid meal bills. And once again, I know we always talk about this, but St. Peter does not shame students. It does not deny students food. So, we are in good standing as far as our policy, and our policy is very strong. 4.12, disposition of obsolete equipment. 4.13, student activity accounting. This is what we just talked about in the audit. Let the legislature make clear that the school board is in charge and must take control of its student activity accounts. And this policy provides for that. 6.10, school district curriculum instruction goals, structural materials. 6.32, school district system accountability. 6.8, homeschooling. This is a new policy where we talk about the guidelines for homeschooled students. 7.18, medication. It adds sunscreen, which was quite a debate at one time. Student use and possession of sunscreen products during the school day while on school property or at school-sponsored events. 7.45, mandated reporting of John LeGlecht or physical or sexual abuse. It adds to crimes under the policy. 7.61, student activity program clarifies that any funds raised for co-curricular activities will be spent on co-curricular activities. 8.41 adds basically vaping to our policy. I would move the adoption of the policies as amended.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Further clarification or comments?
John?
Go ahead.
No, I just got to say, one other thing I did want to mention before we leave this. The committee thought it would be best for the new committee, starting next year, whoever serves on that, to look at the policy committee review guidelines. And these are pretty well set out as an example, questions to ask ourselves as we review. Do we understand the purpose of the policy? Is this how we really operate? Does it work for us? And questions like that. So, that'll be for the new committee here, Mr. Chair.
Mm-hmm. John?
Having this, after 10 years, this is my first year on the policy review committee, and I just want to commend the committee chairman, Meeks, for being so thorough in going over these policies and really paying attention to the details. And some of this is state-mandated, but it's nice to have a guy in the room that can explain why it's state-mandated and the history behind it. And I just think he did a very thorough job on, especially this last section. All of it, but especially this last one.
Thank you. Others?
I do have a motion in a second to approve these. Right?
Yes.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries. They are adopted. So you'll be getting a whole bunch of stuff to stick and change in your policy manuals probably before the year end. Next, we have consider approval of a one-year maintenance agreement, City of St. Peter for Community Spirit Park.
Dr. Olson?
Your maintenance agreement with Community Spirit Park ends at the end of December. So it's based on the city fiscal year, which is a calendar year, as opposed to the school district fiscal year, which runs from July 1st to June 30th. The shared programs and services committee met with representatives from the City of St. Peter on October 24th. And the consensus of the group was to extend the agreement for a one-year, on a one-year basis, to be continuing to look at perhaps one-year agreements. You may look to extend it a bit more down the road. But I think that, just as in anything else, when you have an agreement for an initial year, once in a while you have a few bumps. But I think that they've been worked through very well by our staff and the city staff. And the agreement is essentially the same as it was a year ago. And I would recommend your approval.
This does require a motion to approve. Have a motion in a second. Yeah, I think that the ongoing relationship we have with the city is working well. It hasn't been flawless, but nothing is. And it seems like it's gone really well. They would like to see, I think, longer-term agreements. We prefer shorter-term agreements. And so, we've got a nice accommodation here. We're going for another year, and we'll keep earning our way towards maybe lengthier agreements. But that'll be for others to decide. So, we have a motion and a second to approve a one-year maintenance agreement. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries, and the agreement is in place for another year. Dr. Olson, we are approving site and system plans for 2019 and 2020.
One of the things that I think is really a strength of the St. Peter School District is that you annually update and review your strategic plan. You set that strategic plan on a five-year basis. But as you know, things change, and there are new requirements. There are areas that you determine you may need to look at with more of a finer... with more of a fine-tooth comb or more of a spotlight shed on them. So you review your strategic plan on an annual basis, make modifications, particularly as it relates to your annual strategic priorities. And then what happens is that strategic plan is looked at, at all of the sites in the district and with our various systems groups in the district. So, all of our various employee groups are involved with setting strategic priorities in each of their particular areas. We even work with our contracted providers in the area of transportation and food service to do the same thing. You had an opportunity to review the site and systems plans at your December 2nd school board study session. There were a couple of suggestions made. One was that there was more of a consistent format among the plans, and that's been done, and that format's included in your packet. In addition, there was an idea or a thought that we should be adding the area learning center as a systems plan. That's been done, and that's included in your packet as well. And in specific, when we talk about the area learning center, the plans really are focused on adding more options to our alternative school classrooms. That's working through the various process and procedures that we have, looking at a different way to award credit recovery to high school students. So it was from a seat-based system to a standards-based system. We also have included some moves to add extended day and summer school programming at the 5, 6, 7, and 8th grade level. So those are the primary focus points in the area learning center systems plan. So with that, I'll stand for any questions or that you might have regarding any of our systems or sites plans.
This does require a motion to approve?
We saw a move. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments for our superintendent? We had quite a dialogue about this at our study session, and I thought that was really good, and appreciate very much Jeff, you and your team getting those modifications made for us by this meeting, so. Others? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Put the same sign. Motion carries, and we approve the site and system plans for 2019, 2020. The next item we have is something we learned about in a funny way, kind of, regarding our requirement to consider a resolution establishing combined polling places prior to the year an election occurs. And that was kind of a surprise.
Correct. The 2017 legislature indicated that you have to pass a resolution on combined polling places on an annual basis, not just in a year that you have an election. Now, you did pass a resolution on combined polling places in July of this year, which really added to the resolution that the City of St. Peter passed in December of 2018. So that resolution did cover our requirement for 2018 because the City of St. Peter ran the election for both the city and the school board, they were responsible for that. But as we move into December now, we find that the city is planning on changing their polling places next year, and so moving the polling place for, from Johnson Hall back to the St. Peter Armory. So that means that we need to pass another resolution combining polling places to reflect that change. And so in your packet, there is a resolution that looks at those combined polling places, Ward 1 National Guard Armory, Ward 2 Community Center, the outside of St. Peter in Nikla County, the townships voted the Minnesota Valley Education District, and in the school district in LeSueur County, where the townships are in our school district, they voted Cusota Community Center. So I would recommend your passing this resolution on combined polling places, and you will note that there is, there certainly has been discussion about a possible operating levy vote and referendum for next November, I believe it's November 3rd of 2020, although there have been no official or specific decisions made on that at this point in time. So I would recommend your approval of the resolution.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on the resolution confirming combined polling places for 2020 school district elections. This is a rule call vote, and I'll start with the gentleman on my left.
Aye.
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 It's unanimous, the resolution passes. Next item we have is approval of the master agreement with custodians. Mr. Locan's card?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the negotiations committee had several meetings with the custodians and their representative over the course of the fall, and they went really well. And as you can see in your packet, there were some adjustment, or what came of it was we had market rate adjustment for some of the boiler licenses that we saw, that was, they're getting harder to find, and so we needed to make a little adjustment there. And overall, everything went really well across the board. So I move that we accept the master agreement with the custodians for 19 through 21.
Second.
Others?
Just one other thing that I learned, Mr. Chair, members of the board, was that the boiler license across the, really across the country becoming more difficult, and part of the reason is the change from steam-powered ships and submarines to nuclear-powered submarines, so that there aren't as many Navy veterans coming out with that boiler license experience. And so, we're very fortunate that we have a number of our custodians who have that first-class boiler license, which is required to have in a school district where you're using the boilers. So, I think it's appropriate to make that adjustment.
And I think another phrase that, for those of you who are keen observers of this program as it plays over and over again on TV, you've heard us use the phrase, "market rate adjustment" this year several times in our contracts. And I think it's important that, you know, that's not there just by accident. One of the challenges you have when you're in a system like a school district or other governmental entities, it's not as easy to respond to demands of the marketplace, i.e. wages. When wages go up, we're not always able to lead that, we tend to be behind that curve in, so when you hear market adjustment, that's usually what that's meaning, is that we're finding that people have opportunities to go other places and do a similar job and be paid more. And so we have to have a jagged line, we have to make an adjustment, and that's happened in several of our contracts as we've come through this line of negotiation, and it's a reaction to the general economy and how good the job market really is for able-bodied people, so.
I would just mention one other thing about this particular contract, it's in line with one of your goals in that you moved to a defined contribution to health and hospitalization insurance as opposed to a defined benefit. So there's a set amount that you now pay towards health and hospitalization insurance rather than having it go up at whatever rate that goes up. It certainly is a negotiable item as you move into future negotiations, but it's not an automatic.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Put the same sign. Motion carries, and the contract is adopted. Next, we have kind of a fun thing, actually. I think swats away at a couple of annoying things, John.
Yeah, this is a really, the proposal in front of you is for approving a professional teaching internship program in cooperation with Minnesota State University, Mankato. The professional teaching internship program takes a mid-year graduate who's student taught with us in the fall. It could be potentially more than one person, in this case, we have one particular candidate. And through Minnesota State University, Mankato, they enroll in a three-credit graduate program along with similar counterparts who are employed in a similar situation, or have an agreement, I shouldn't say, in a similar situation in districts like Faribault, Owatonna, Mankato, missing one here.
Northfield.
No, not Northfield, but at any rate, there are a number of, Waseka. So all of those school districts have the same kind of situation, and the agreement then is to employ that mid-year graduate who probably just graduated a week or so ago from MSU, and they become a fully licensed teacher, and the guarantee is that they fill in as a substitute for us for four days per week. Now, there is no real additional cost to us because we pay substitutes anyway, and we certainly have more than four days a week of substitutes, and many days we have multiple substitutes, and it's been more difficult to find substitute teachers, so it helps meet that goal as well. The fifth day is a day where the professional teaching intern gets an opportunity to observe master teachers, to work with our teacher on special assignment, on professional development activities. And in effect, what we get in addition to helping to fill the substitutes for four days a week is we almost get a semester-long job interview, if you will, for the person. And there's no guarantee that that person would be employed as a teacher after this program is ended. Also, this program is an at-will kind of situation, so if it wasn't working out, we can end the agreement at any point in time. But the other plus to it is, I think it gives, as I say, it gives us an opportunity to meet our substitute teacher need, gives us an opportunity to test drive, to do a semester-long interview, and it also gives us an opportunity to really get a potential candidate well-grounded in our professional development opportunities, our curriculum, our way of doing business, if you will. This generally would have been in front of you a number of times, but it wasn't until last Tuesday that the program was finalized because we had to have commitments, at least to move forward at the board level, as we're doing tonight, in those other districts that I mentioned. So.
And this candidate needs to have this, if we choose to move on this, she needs to have this letter so that she can accelerate her teacher's license.
Correct.
And be able to be on board then by the beginning of the January term, coming back. I think another thing that it helps a little bit is that sometimes when you're dealing with young people, they think that, "Oh, I know I want to be a second-grade teacher. Oh, I know I want to be a fifth grade." This young person is going to get an opportunity to see what it's like in a whole bunch of different areas, and I think help them make a better decision in their career, and also help us if they would happen to be interested in an opening that we would have in the coming season. As Jeff says, it's a bit of a struggle sometimes to know who you got on the sub-list, and we're paying somebody anyway, we might as well pay somebody with training and some enthusiasm, so.
And I'd also mention that the candidate has worked as a student teacher in our district for the first semester, so they're grounded in a lot of the staff development in the elementary level, in our new curricular areas, our reading program, our math program, et cetera. So they're a substitute that comes in that's had that kind of training in background, I think that's a plus as well.
So you're recommending?
I am recommending we move forward with this, yes.
This does require a motion for us to do this.
Yeah, me too, I'll take that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further questions or comments of the superintendent? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Put the same sign, and the motion carries. That gets us through all of our action items for the evening, and we look forward to one of our favorite reports every year, right at Christmas.
Thank you, thanks for the opportunity to come. The report I have tonight is based upon the 2018-19 school year. If you can turn your eyes towards the information in your packet, you'll see that I kind of wanted to provide something different that I had before and show you the benefits of being involved in community ed. What's unique about our community ed program is that it is different from every community ed program in the state. The reason it's different is because it's driven by the needs of the community. So we find out what the community needs, and then we try to meet those needs, and that's why no community ed program looks like the other one. But to kind of give you a little bit of a breakdown from the last year, you'll see that we had 31 organizations that participated in providing different classes and events. We are really fortunate to live in a community where we have organizations that recognize the importance of giving back and providing extra enrichment for people. You'll also notice that we served 16,983 participants this year. I say participants because each time you participated in an event, we counted you. So this is not an unduplicated amount, but it is a nice growth for us. We grew by 20% in those numbers from the previous year. Some of that is attributed to several large events that we had throughout the year, our Fiesta being one of them, Aron Kine's D-Day presentation, and then when doing the ticket sales for the Fall Musical has also benefited us as far as the number of people that we serve. And we had an Images for Change event in May that also produced some great turnout of people. So when you look at the benefits of community education, one of the things that we do is we provide a safe, accessible learning environments and opportunities for people of all ages, and we do that with the benefit of being able to access all of our school buildings. And in addition to that, our community center. So it's a great way for those that do not have children in the school district to be able to access the resources that we have in those buildings. We also connect families to the school and community resources through things such as family and parental support that's provided through our ECFE, early childhood and family education classes, and then our school readiness programs. We partner with the Food Shelf to offer the Teen Pantry each month, and the Children's Weekend Backpack Food Program as well. We collaborate with the Senior Center and the Recreation Department to provide the Learning is Forever program. Another thing that community ed does is it helps prepare children for kindergarten. NET Pravsky does an excellent job in leadership with this. Whether it's early childhood screening, which helps us identify early learning issues that students might have, or preschool classes up at the Early Childhood Center, we help children get ready for kindergarten and make sure that they're prepared for their school experience. And this is also a way that community and family education helps the district meet one of the state's world's best workforce goals. Another thing that our programs do is support working families through our school-age care programs. We offer a variety of enrichment activities during those days. We have a site at both of our elementary schools, and we operated a site during the summer. So during the past school year, we serve 214 children in all of our programs. We help expand learning beyond the school day. Our after-school enrichment programs provide opportunities for students to explore new interests, develop skills beyond the school curriculum. We find that students who enroll in art, music, and STEM classes learn additional critical thinking skills and problem-solving skills, which then carry right over into the school day. So engaging students in leadership programs, like the summer activity that is held through the rec department, with providing community service, that also helps build and strengthen our students, and it really helps students learn other things which hopefully lead to fewer risk-taking behaviors. Our programs also help build a quality workforce through our adult basic ed. The programs that they help adults inquire the skills that they need so that they can get jobs, keep jobs, and continue to be important community members. During the 2018-19 school year, During the 2018-19 school year, the Bridge to Work Readiness class, which is a job skills program, helped people learn how to do resume writing, how to interview, situational judgment skills on the job, and also some digital literacy. And so we had 15 people that participated in that. We also had 78 adults who were enrolled in our GED, Adult Diploma, and English language classes. I know I've talked to you about this before. I'm always interested to know the countries that people are participating from. In addition to the United States, we help people from Somalia, El Salvador, Guatemala, Nicaragua, Brazil, Ethiopia, Mexico, Kenya, and Honduras learn English and improve their math skills. Another thing that our program does is it helps improve the quality of life for people. There are many opportunities that show that lifelong learning has the advantages of relieving stress, fostering creativity, providing a sense of accomplishment, and then also helping people with keeping up that mental clarity. So enrolling in an art class or learning to play the piano, gaining a new skill like welding, or attending an author event are some of the ways that we engage the community. We also help to create a sense of belonging for people by providing opportunities for people to get to know one another through classes. And this is really a catalyst for building community, whether it's attending one of our cross-cultural learning experiences, watching a documentary at the Historical Society, sharing a meal, or gathering to talk about issues. We are connectors for people. If you look at the very last page, this is a little bit of the numbers of people that we serve. So during the past school year, there were 9,866 participants in our adult programs. If you look at the pictures there, the very top one is from a blacksmithing class. Mike Reiser taught welding and blacksmithing last year, and he's doing it again this year. It's been a really popular thing and a nice way for the community to come in and see those great resources that we have at the high school. The next picture is one of our life classes. And the picture to the far right is a community facility discussion that the Gustavus students in Pam Connor's class led. It was during Nobel Conference, and it was on soil. So we had a variety of people of different ages getting together and talking. You'll notice there's an art class picture and then one of the photos from our Fiesta. During the past school year, we had 7,117 youth participate in the different programs that we offered. There's the STEM class picture that you can see on the top left. Next to that is one of our ECFE classes in the Early Childhood Center. And down below is a youth art class, and then a picture from our Summer SAC program. So our goal is to serve people of all ages, and we are privileged to be working in this school district, having the support that we have from you and from our community members.
Thank you, Tammy.
Anyone want to quiz her?
I think it's pretty amazing the breadth of people that are touched in the community and family education program, from birth through senior citizens like me.
It seems like every year, as you say, Tammy, it changes, you know? And it grows, and it's better, and it's, you wonder how it can be, and it just is. And it's because of you and your team. And thank you very much.
Thank you. We have really good people that work for us and do a great job.
We get real bang for our buck on this deal.
Thank you.
Really, really good.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Chiswell.
Facilities?
Yeah, I just wanted to put this on the agenda. It was informational. I'm going to talk about really three kind of big areas that we'll be looking at in terms of facilities, upgrades, renovation, maintenance, et cetera. The first is, and these have all been discussed at a variety of different committees, but we're looking at some adjustments and some work at Floyd B. Johnson Field, primarily looking at scoreboards, roofs of the storage area, concession area, the press box, looking at some painting and upgrades, and also taking a look at our restrooms and some areas that we might be able to focus on there. A second area is the middle school. So we have really a two-year focus on the middle school. This first summer, 2020, is primarily zeroed in on the interior. And so part of that is replacing lights and ceiling tiles and so forth that have been in place for a long time. It's looking at how we might be able to reconfigure the media center. Media centers 30 years ago, 40 years ago, 50 years ago were huge because we had tons of books and no other place for students to go in large groups. That's certainly changed, not only at the middle school, but our other buildings. So there's an opportunity to take a look at our middle school media center and see how that might be reconfigured. And then in addition to that, we'll be doing some of our ongoing plumbing and electrical updates. We always need to remember about our middle school is that that building has about six different additions to it, but the oldest portion and primary portion of the building is 1957, 1958. So that just needs some continual attention. And then the third area is Community Spirit Park. And there have been discussions at the facilities committee level, at the co-curricular meeting level, at the finance committee level, committee level, about Community Spirit Park and just continuing to update and work with the city on making that park what we all want it to be, to serve our district residents and students. So any questions? Want any of those for me?
No. Good reminder of where we are and where we're going. Brings us to reports. And our principals, I think, are going to join us.
With ATU's absence, I'll go ahead and start. And since we saw you last, we did four evenings of conferences due to a little snowstorm that interrupted our day-long conferences. So kudos to the teachers for putting in four very long days where they taught the students and then had conferences at night. But it was nice that there was a Thanksgiving break in between those two. We also had the opportunity to have Mary Blackwell, who's an author from Stillwater, I believe, came and had four different sessions with our students last Friday. So it was a great day. It was interesting because our new reading series really focuses on authors and text sets and looking for, going a little bit deeper with trade books. She mentioned after she, when she was leaving, that she's never had a group of individual students that have asked such great questions and really wanted to know about the writing process and how stories are developed. So it was kind of a neat little tie-in for us. We also had our performance last Thursday evening, I believe it was, and we had nearly 700 people the first, on the first showing. That was the first of two shows. Then we only had first grade, so there was a little bit smaller crowd because some of them have, were kindergarten parents only in the beginning. But we definitely filled up that auditorium, and they sang their heart out, and they did a wonderful job. So kudos to Robin Woods, who prepared them for that, and to the high school for allowing us to use that space. We didn't eat any candy or drink any pop or anything in there, so... And the last thing that I wanted to mention is just thank the community for their generosity. We have a giving tree that we do put up every year this time of year, and it's filled with the needs of various families within our building. And there are about 15 families that are benefited, that benefit from this, and it's sponsored through our parent council. During conference time, individuals are invited to take an ornament off of the tree, and they can purchase an item for family, everything from clothing to toys to school pants for school, socks, tennis shoes for our offices. So the tree is now empty. Everything has been provided, and the wrapping was taken place away. So just very, very grateful to all those people who provide that for our students and to the, through the coordination of Laura Zender, our counselor, along with parent councils. And thanks to everyone who brought the things.
Greetings from North Elementary. It certainly is the season of giving. I'd like to continue bringing some attention to our counselor, Dave Rebar, and our PTO because they do that same thing with the giving tree. I think we had 20 to 25 families that will receive some great Christmas presents out of the goodness of all the families that picked up the ornaments that were on the tree during the conferences. And right now, if you came in the North office, you could see the back side of the office just kind of overflowing with all the gifts that these families have brought in. So I think that's just another example of the wonderful community that we live in. To see the families gathering around that tree at conference time and picking those ornaments and bringing those gifts in is, will go a long way for those families. So thanks, Mr. Rebar and PTO, for organizing that great event every year. Also, this week, our teachers are continuing to give back. If you were to gather down at the Food Shelf on Wednesday evening of this week, you'll see about 12 of our teachers volunteering their time. Over the long two-week break, our families that receive weekend food, our students that receive weekend food program bags will actually have an opportunity to access the Food Shelf. And our teachers are down there, like I mentioned, 12 of them down there volunteering over the course of about two hours to help families that arrive down there that qualified for that service kind of pack their carts as we can't get the students the food bags over the long two weeks' break. So this allows them to get in there and get the needed food for their time away from school. So I want to thank those teachers that volunteer their time for that. Also, you'll see some, if you come to North after the break, you'll see some new enhancements that I'm excited about. We're going to have a couple digital sign TVs installed over the break, one downstairs in the long hallway, right outside the cafeteria, and then another one right above the security doors in the front hallway. We've been testing out a very inexpensive system that's really student, students use it a lot, and it's called the Raspberry Pi System, and it's a digital signage in STEM class that I know Angie Potts has students kind of doing some programming with. But the front office has been working on putting some signage up there, and we've been testing one of the monitors with Mr. Overgo's help. So that'll be something excited that parents will be able to read as they come in the building. And the lower-level one will be more student-focused, so students, like student council and stuff, will make things that will go up on that screen to share with what's going on around the building throughout the weeks. So I'm excited to see that. And then also, Dave Rebar wrote a grant for a sensory path. And so in the hallway, kind of back behind the cafeteria at North, there will be some stickers, they're large stickers, that'll kind of go about 50 feet in length, and they'll have signs on them, arrows, almost kind of like a hopscotch kind of approach. And it's meant for students in classes to kind of take a little sensory break as they're kind of working their way down the hallway, kind of twisting and turning, looking at various combinations of math problems, lettering, words, and things like that. And it's just another opportunity to use our space for another learning opportunity. So I want to thank Dave and Mike Keller because he's our head custodian. He'll be stripping the wax off that hallway so that these can be installed and then re-waxed over on top of, so they last a long time. So we definitely want to thank him for doing that over the winter break. And then I always like to push out these numbers about this time of year. It's some engagement numbers on our Seesaw platform. And Seesaw is our online virtual learning environment that we use at North. And I always like to kind of go into the analytics in there and see how it's being used by the students, the teachers, and the parents. And at this point of this school year, we already have 68,000 student posts. So that means that students are on there kind of recording their thinking, their learning, explaining math problems, telling you about a story or a book that they're reading, and teachers are giving them feedback. And more, even more importantly, 35,000 parent interactions on there to this date, to this time. So we're not even halfway through the school year, and teachers and students and parents are using it exactly what it's meant to be for. So in the case of some snow, that may or may not happen, and then we have Flex Learning Days, nothing out of the ordinary will happen. They'll just kind of log in and learn from home with the system they're already pretty used to using.
We had 48% participation with our winter conferences. That's up 12% from last year, so we're pretty excited about that. That equates to 959 total conferences. Tomorrow night, we wrap up our winter concert season with Dave Halk's seventh and eighth grade band. Starts at 7:00 at the High School Performing Arts Center. And then lastly, just a note that the Native American Parent Advisory Council will be meeting tomorrow, or I'm sorry, on Wednesday at 5:30 PM at the middle school.
You've already heard the PAC, the Performing Arts Center, and the gym at the high school have been hopping through the last month, starting with the Fall Musical. We had record numbers. We're still waiting to hear from our, that ticketing company that we use, exactly how many seats, how many seats we sold. But we want to thank, I think, every member of the school board attended that show this year. And so thank you for your support, not just in attendance, but also for the entire program. They're already busy working on their one act. A little bit of a change from Beauty and the Beast, Squirrel Girl Goes to College is the name of the one act. I'm sure you've heard of it. The high school choir concert was last Monday, and again, that's always a beautiful show. And so we want to thank Mr. Hermanson and those students for entertaining us. You'll be hearing more about this in the weeks and months that come, but there are some really exciting things happening in the world of CTE at the high school. And just one of them that I'd like to mention tonight is that through a Greater United Way grant, two of our CTE instructors, Mike Reiser and Gina Lilienthal, will be pursuing their work experience licensure. And so kids starting next year, one of them, one of those two teachers will be ready next year to offer a work experience course. So kids will have the opportunity to obtain an intern, either paid or unpaid, but for credit internships out and about in the community. So we're really very excited about what that will do for some of our kids. We had an avid site visit last Wednesday. Last Wednesday, we had the state and regional avid directors at both the middle school and the high school, observing in our classrooms, meeting with our site teams, and meeting with administration at both sites. And so we're waiting to hear feedback from them, but that has a lot to do toward our certificate, what level of certification we're able to get. And Jen Maldonado played a major role in scheduling that event and showing them around. And thanks to John Graff, too. He at the high school was a very hospitable guest to our avid, avid team. I'd like to give a shout-out to former board member Charlie Potts. He presented to our high school staff at Friday's early release about the glorification of busy, which was a really good message to give to teachers at this time of the year for both themselves and to think about their students and how busy our high school kids are at this time of the year and always. And then lastly, I know that I can speak for the rest of the admin team. Thank you to Board Chair Carl Stroud and Board Member Meeks for your service and all of your support that you've shown to this team and our students over your years of service. Thank you.
Any questions? For them? The last tense of the year. Thank you.
Enjoy your break.
Thank you.
Dr. Olson? I mentioned three things. First, the board member-elect Soderland and board member-elect Stewie. And I attended Phase One Training at the Minnesota School Boards Association office last Friday. So that was a good session. And we'll be attending Phase Two Training on January 15th at the Hyatt in Minneapolis. The winter conference, that just is another reminder, is the 16th and 17th. The typical arrangement is that we move into the hotel on the evening of the 15th. If any of you are interested in any of the early birds, you can go up and see if there's an interest and let me know or let Sarah know, and we can get registered there. And then I just want to reiterate what Annette said. I want to thank Mark and Bob for your years of service, to the students, to the staff, to the community of St. Peter. You've really done a tremendous job, and we really don't get enough opportunities to say thank you to school board members. And so we want to thank you for all that you've done to move our district ahead. We appreciate it.
That's nice, Joe. Board members? Anyone? Drew's birthday.
Okay.
Are we singing?
Oh, not.
That's nice, Joe. Board members? Anyone? Drew's birthday.
Okay.
Are we singing?
Oh, we're not.
Ben, you got anything?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Two things. I went to the middle school choir concert. Mrs. Abel's did a great job with the students. One of the things that I thought was particularly impressive, aside from the students' performances, was that there was a varsity basketball game going on at exactly the same time, and you could not tell. So, Carl Sanderson did a really nice job. The main concourse was easy to navigate and find. We got a parking lot on either end, and when you were in the theater, you couldn't hear the concert. I assume when you were in the gym, you couldn't hear the concert, but we couldn't hear the basketball game, so that went really, really well. And Mark and Bob, it's been a tremendous honor and pleasure serving with you the last four years, or six years, or whatever, and then the last twelve. So...
Twelve for you was longer for me.
Yeah, sixteen for you, right? That's a long time to dedicate to your community, both of you, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, just to kind of echo what everybody's been saying, thank you, both of you, Mark and Bob, for your service. And Mark, you've been the only board chair I've known, and I think when I hear from other boards and some of the things that go on, there's, you definitely have set a culture that allows us to have lively discussion about things, but it's never personal. And I think that that's really a great quality that I hope whoever the next board chair is emulates. Bob, you're the smartest school board member I've ever met, and your wealth of knowledge and knowledge about legislative issues and just the particulars about being a board member has helped, I think, myself for sure, but all of us become better board members. So, thank you, and thank you for your friendship, too. So...
You're welcome. Rober?
I don't do very good at this. I'll send everybody an email.
I can't say anything more than what those gentlemen across the way have said. Two great role models.
Oh, that's enough of that. Miss Lizzie, I don't want to leave you out. Did you forget something from earlier?
I did not.
Okay.
Hey, thanks for hanging in the whole meeting.
You know, we should give her like a Christmas ribbon, because I don't remember the last time we had one make it all the way through.
This is the last time she does.
Yeah. You got to come prepared with an excuse to slip out.
Well, I actually look forward to it because for my Opportunity Day, I'm shadowing Mr. Graff, so like, it might be part of my future coming to these.
Oh, nice. All right. Well, upcoming meetings of the school board, we got a special board meeting on Wednesday night in the district office at six-thirty. Gibson Donation Committee is meeting on Thursday, the nineteenth. Instructional Program is also Thursday, the nineteenth. And then next, January sixth, there'll be an organizational meeting on Monday at six-thirty PM and a regular board meeting immediately following. And the current vice chair, Ben Leonard, will be bringing that into order at the organizational meeting. Dr. Olson?
Chair Carl, let me just remind folks on the board, please bring your calendars with you to the special board meeting on the eighteenth, because there'll be some dates that you'll be looking at and looking to set.
And that is in the middle school media center?
In the middle school media center, not the district office.
Before we adjourn, I just want to wish everybody a joyous Kwanzaa, happy Hanukkah, and a very merry Christmas. Who can do this?
I move to adjourn.
Say it. How was the favor? We are adjourned.